Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free and equal opportunities which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Vanis Clemmons?
Here.
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mrs. Dolan?
Here.
Ms. Kildare? Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Miss, here.
Mrs. Walters?
Here.
Dr. Yarnell?
Here.
Student snap recognition?
Thank you, Mrs. Vanis Clemmons. This evening, we have the honor of recognizing one of the students for an outstanding performance in a national competition. Please join me in a round of applause for Dylan Miller, who recently came home with a silver medal from the Skills USA National Competition in Louisville, Kentucky. The second-place finish came a few weeks after Dylan finished his four-year career in the Upper Bucks County Technical Schools Small Engine Repair Program. He earned the trip to Nationals by winning a gold medal in the state competition. At Nationals, Dylan competed against more than 100 gold medal winners from around the United States in the Motorcycle Service Technology category. Over two days, he participated in mock interviews, written tests, and 10 timed, hands-on challenges under the watchful eyes of industry professionals. The challenges were representative of what a technician routinely encounters in a Harley-Davidson dealership service department, including scheduled maintenance tasks, use of surface, electrical diagnostic and parts manuals, precision measurement, brake service, chassis suspension service, fuel delivery system inspection and repair, transmission and drive systems, and powertrain systems. Judges looked for clean and organized work habits, correct use of reference materials, the ability to follow directions, and good technical skills. As a silver medalist, Dylan won a number of great prizes for himself, including tools and gift cards. The Upper Bucks Technical County School will also receive a brand-new 2018 Harley-Davidson motorcycle that can be used in several training programs. But perhaps the most valuable prize Dylan won was a $17,500 scholarship to Ohio Technical College in Cleveland. Combined with the $10,000 scholarship he won from OTC in the state competition, Dylan will have his tuition covered to start their welding technology master training program in the fall. In the meantime, Dylan will continue to work as a shop assistant, no surprise here, at Hammond Harley-Davidson in West Rock Hill Township. Congratulations, Dylan, and good luck in your future endeavors. We're very proud of you. And if this is you, this is Dylan. Come join us. They're coming from the Technical School as well to congratulate Dylan.
Thank you, and congratulations, Dylan, on your exceptional accomplishment. Before we move into questions and comments from guests, I want to make a motion to modify the agenda to remove item five on the personnel report. Do I have a second?
Item number five is the appointment of a long-term sub. This individual was fortunate enough to receive a contracted position at another district and informed us later this afternoon.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes eight-zero. Okay, questions and comments from guests? The Penridge School Board welcomes public comment according to Policy 903. We remind everyone of the following: Public comment shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the Board. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and note their name and municipality. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer rather than to individual Board members, district employees, or members of the public. A speaker may speak once during each comment period. Please note that these sessions are designated for comments to protect the confidentiality and privacy rights of all members of our community. The Board encourages members of the public to direct any comments regarding particular individuals, such as students or district employees, privately to the superintendent or other appropriate administrator. Or to communicate with the Board privately by sending an email to psdschoolboard@penridge.org. Questions raised and not addressed may be followed up at a later time. Okay, the first person on the list is Sue Furlong.
Sue Furlong, West Rock Hill Township. I was going through some of the attachments for this evening's meeting, and it was brought to my attention, too, that there is a line item called a it was a $919 contribution to Water for the South Sudan. This was coming out of the General Funds, which is the fund where we keep tax dollars. So by definition, it appears to be a distribution of tax dollars that were paid in by the residents of Penridge, and it does not appear to be a student account, although that was offered as an explanation if you look at Facebook. So I would like to understand what that entry is for, who generated it, and why I'm paying taxes to make charitable donations with no input as to who gets what. I don't think it's wrong, even if it were a charity that I favored, because it may not be a charity that somebody else favors. Can somebody explain to me what that entry is for?
I'll respond to all the questions at the end. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, that would be it.
Thank you. Diane Herring?
Diane Herring, Hill Town Township. As the Board President just announced, I submitted an email to the Board earlier today in anticipation of asking some questions this evening. I do not expect answers this evening because I think it requires a lot of background work that has to be done, and I am genuinely interested in the answers to the questions, okay? The Class of 2018 purchased on behalf of their student fundraising money an in excess of $10,000 gator, to which we have all been publicly advised is for security. I cannot, however, find it anywhere in any board discussion, any committee discussion, any strategic plan, anything alluding to the necessity of said item, nor who's going to be responsible for using it on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly, or even what its intended purpose is, only that it's been listed as a security need. I bring that up because the money that was used to purchase this is sweat equity. Those kids stand up there and sell hot dogs. They get the proceeds from that to build a fundraising account that's supposed to benefit them. As of your own meeting, which the documents I support send to you, which, by the way, are all publicly available, some of which I've gotten through right to know and some of which are even readily available on your website, show that the students voted on May 4th to purchase said gator, and they were provided a quote. So that would mean that quote would have to have been given to them prior. However, their account balance at the time, based on their vote, was less than the cost of the gator. And in general, the accepted accounting principles, you kited their account. You have contracts that these kids were obligated to, this district was obligated to, that exceeded the balance of that account. So we spent money we didn't have based on what projection? Prom ticket cost? It's called kiting. I suggest everyone look it up. It's illegal. I would like to know at some point what the security use for said gator is that the kids pay for, their sweat equity?
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from guests? Mrs. Furlong, kids at Central held a dance to raise funds for that project, so no taxpayer funds were used for that. Mrs. Herring? The as you noted, there was a lot of details. The administration is looking into that, and when they have an answer for you, we'll get back to you with all of the details on that. Okay? Thank you. Okay, next Judge Boylan will be swearing in our new superintendent, Dr. David Bolton.
Good evening. Why don't you stand so that they can repeat after me, please? I, David Bolton
I, David Bolton.
Do solemnly swear solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support
That I will support
Obey and defend
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And the Constitution of this common.
And that I will discharge
And that I will discharge
The duties of my office
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Okay, next is the consent calendar. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through J. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Student liaison report.
It's summer, so nothing to report out here. Thanks for having us.
Okay, next up is the president's report. For those of you who didn't make it to our last special board meeting, we appointed two new board members to the Penridge School Board at our special meeting on July 10th. Sherri Thompson, a Ferguson resident, whose two children graduated from Penridge High School, is Director of Operations for a small land development company in Sellersville. She has a master's in public administration and is pursuing a doctorate in business administration specializing in strategy and innovation. She is also a certified mediator. After being appointed to the Board, she shared that she loves her community and is really excited to serve here and be a part of the process. Dave Rice, a West Rock Hill Township resident and also a 1987 Penridge High School grad, has worked in the information technology industry for 23 years. He is the president of the Penridge Little League and has been involved in the organization for 16 years. He has served on the West Rock Hill Parks and Rec Committee for 10 years. His three children attended Penridge, and one is currently a student here. After his appointment, he shared that he believes in community service and getting involved himself. It brings people together, introduces new ideas, and gets more accomplished. He loves Penridge and is looking forward to being a part of this great school district. The two of them bring skill sets that will greatly contribute to our work here on the Board. Ms. Thompson has already been a valuable asset with regard to our pending letter proposals. Her background will add tremendous insight to our finance and facilities committees. Mr. Rice's long-term experience in the IT industry will benefit the district immensely with technology becoming more and more of an integral component of all aspects of district operations. His experience running one of our local sports organizations and volunteering in the community will serve him well as he takes on this new position. We welcome Sherri Thompson and Dave Rice to the Board and are excited to work together to accomplish great things for Penridge moving forward. I also wanted to update you on the superintendent transition. As you can see, Dr. Price is currently serving as our acting superintendent through the end of July. We would like to thank him for stepping up and taking on this important role as we transition to our new superintendent, Dr. Bolton, on August 1st. Thank you, Dr. Price. I'd like to update you on the permanent solicitor, which we'll be voting on this evening. All board members were welcomed and encouraged to suggest firms to interview. We were also contacted by additional firms who expressed interest in serving the Penridge School District. We interviewed all of them, which amounted to eight interviews conducted over three evenings. All board members were invited to take part in the interviews. We ultimately ended up with a committee of five board directors, Mr. Kraus, Dr. Yarnell, Mrs. Cullen, Ms. Kildare, and myself. These were long and late nights for board members as well as the firms we interviewed. Thank you to everyone for the time and effort that was dedicated to this process. There were truly great, experienced firms to choose from. We reviewed proposals, contacted references, and ultimately came to the unanimous conclusion to recommend Mike Miller from Eckhart Siemens for approval as permanent solicitor for the district. Mr. Miller's reputation precedes him. His record is impeccable, and his references from other school districts he serves cannot say enough positive things about him. They think he walks on water and has saved them exponentially in legal costs. He and Ryan Cassidy have done an outstanding job transitioning the district during this difficult time, and we are confident they will provide exceptional legal counsel going forward. In addition to their exemplary legal counsel, one of the many positive qualities that was conveyed was their ability to unify people and build consensus. And the last thing is the solicitor billing and transition. Concerns were raised regarding a line item on the Solicitor Bill and implications that the process was somehow inappropriate. I'm going to address this as specifically as possible, but this is the last time I am going to address this topic. My president's reports are available as a link to the website and in the minutes for people to refer to. People on this Board were very vocal about their perspectives on hiring a new solicitor. We all clearly knew where each other stood. I had even mentioned to the former president on numerous occasions that I was entertaining making a motion at a public meeting. We also had an executive session to discuss obtaining a new solicitor. It would have been irresponsible to make a motion to dismiss a solicitor without making sure there was a competent replacement to fill in until the Board as a whole could conduct interviews and decide on a permanent solicitor. There was nothing unusual about contacting an attorney we are contracted with to ask about his firm's services. Given that Eckhart Siemens was just hired last year by a Board with which the recent minority was in fact the majority, it seemed the least controversial for an interim solution. They already had the confidence of the entire Board, and they went through the same interview process we have just gone through, which did not include an RFP and would have slowed down the process. I reached out to Ryan Cassidy to see if his firm would be willing and able to provide such services in the interim if such a request was made by the Board. It was clear to him that this may or may not have the votes, but I wanted to make sure it was feasible and legally sound. He checked into whether or not his colleague, Mike Miller, would be willing and able to help us out if we needed him. Reluctantly, as Mike Miller lives near Harrisburg, he agreed to do so if needed. Since then, I believe we have won him over, and he enjoys working with us enough to continue to make the trip. After the meeting, I immediately contacted them to let them know they were now contracted with Solicitor Services for Penridge, that Board leadership had changed hands, and that two board members had resigned. With respect to the specific line item brought up at the last meeting, all attorney hours are billed to the firm. Their intention was to write off that item as a loss to the firm. It inadvertently was billed to us, and they have since credited that amount as soon as it was brought to their attention. I would also like to point out that Mr. Miller drives two hours to get here and two hours home after each of these meetings, and he does not charge us for that time. He and Ryan Cassidy also call with questions or for clarification on legal matters and do not charge for much of that time as well. After we expanded their services to include solicitor work on an interim basis, they agreed to drop the partner rate to $250 per hour. This went into effect on May 1st. Now that we have proposed retaining these additional services on a permanent basis, they have also agreed to drop the associate rate to $195 per hour. This will carry over to future contracts they negotiated on behalf of the district, saving the district money on future negotiations. These additional reduced rates were not taken into account in averaging the fees for the year, likely reducing that cost. Eckhart Siemens has provided this district with expedient and exemplary legal counsel during this time. In fact, some administrators have even commented on the immediacy of their response time. I will also reiterate that even though Mr. Miller's hourly fee is higher, his hours are significantly less, averaging out to what we were paying before. There is always a secondary cost to consider when hiring a solicitor as well with regard to legal situations that arise if you are not given proper legal counsel. From my perspective, Mr. Miller has already proven himself to be exceptional in that regard. The process for getting items on the agenda required contacting four other board directors to get a majority. When I was in the minority opinion, I respected that. I did not have the support to bring things forward. Recently, however, even six people could not make decisions, making it impossible to carry out our duties. That is also how every president is elected to be the president of the Board and how Mrs. Yarley was elected in December. Calls were made in the days leading up to the meeting to obtain the majority support. The same thing happens in Congress when they line up votes they need to pass legislation. It should not matter who the president of the School Board is. Every board director has one equal vote. The job of the Board President is to facilitate the will of the majority of the Board while respecting the minority view, whether that represents the president's personal perspective or not. One vote should never carry more weight than a majority of the Board. People need to understand that many issues are confidential or could have legal implications if we correct the record, so we cannot always do so. Sometimes doing the right thing for the district means we just have to take the hits. Unfortunately, not everyone always respects that line. I would like to note an additional billing correction from our June Board meeting. A board member suggested the billing for Eastburn and Gray for the month of April was $10,000. That was inaccurate. The total was actually over $25,000 for the month of April, and as you may recall, they were only retained for three weeks of that month. I believe this error was an honest mistake because if you scroll down to the bottom of the bill, the last category of billing was just over $10,000, but I wanted to correct the discrepancy with the accurate number for the record. Thank you. Committee reports. I'm sorry, superintendent was worried.
Thank you, Mrs. Vanis Clemmons. I wanted to share a couple of project updates that are going on in the district. Some of them were very evident to you, I'm sure, as you drove it to the parking lot and, of course, walked into the high school main entrance there. So I'll start with the high school and district office. The high school paving for the roads are complete. However, the main entrance sidewalk replacement is ongoing outside of the high school and district office. It's about 70% complete at this point. At South Middle School, the paving was completed as of Saturday, this past Saturday, and striping will be done as weather permits painting this week. The paving operation moved from South to Sellersville. Sidewalks at the front entrance, main drop-off area, are removed at this point, and concrete has begun to be poured and will continue this week as weather permits. Paving will begin around the back of the school and work towards the front at Sellersville. At Bedminster, roof replacement work is complete. Metal trim has been measured and ordered and is expected to be installed in the next two weeks. At Coogat Elementary, roof replacement has begun on the east classroom wing, and a second crew will be starting at the gymnasium. The turf replacement, this new synthetic turf replacement project is just about completed at this point. All the turf is installed. There's just a few punchless items to do at this point. It's in the final step, so hopefully we can receive approval from engineers and allow the public back onto that field real soon. And finally, just to note that the summer cleaning, again, as you see in the hallways as you walk in, is underway, waxing the floors and so forth. Everyone's been working hard in the district, and that is all on schedule, and we'll be ready to go when the school starts. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Now, committee reports. Activities, Mrs. Cullen.
Thank you, Mrs. Vanis Clemmons. The Activities Committee did not meet, and the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 4th.
Thank you, curriculum.
The Curriculum Committee also did not meet, and the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 10th.
Okay, facilities, Mrs. Dolan.
I have one, I have two motions. We have approval of the July 10th meeting minutes.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Dolan, seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
The second motion I have tonight is the approval of obsolete items.
Okay, motion. Motion by Mrs. Dolan. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
The third is motion to approve West Rock Hill PTO to purchase and install a Gaga pit at West Rock Hill Elementary School.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion by Mrs. Dolan, seconded by Mrs. Vanis Clemmons. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
And our next meeting is September 10th. Oh, on the support table, this disappeared. Oh, August 14th.
All right, finance. I'm going to make a motion to approve the July 10th Finance Committee meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I'm going to make a motion to approve Contracts A through H. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Yarnell. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, motion, I'm going to make a motion to approve Student Activity Accounts A through B. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero. Okay, the next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for August 14th. The IU report. The IU met on July 17th. Just want to share a few highlights. Some of the things that took place at the meeting. The executive director's salary and tuition reimbursement were approved for the 2018-19 school year after an exceptional performance evaluation, which will come as no surprise to this Board, after we had the pleasure of working with Dr. Hoffman through the superintendent search and were able to experience his superior performance through that process. I was also voted in as the, as a new member of the Board. At the meeting, we had the opportunity to use an Ozobot, which Mrs. Cullen and Dr. Bolton probably remember us being able to watch the students use the Ozobots at Dibler, quite different using it yourself and trying to program it to, you know, trace where it's supposed to. There was a mini-report sharing the STEAM initiatives being worked on at the IU, along with the expansion of professional learning opportunities, including Carnegie STEM Excellence Pathways, invention literacy with Maki Maki, coding robotics and engineering in elementary. The IU is also working to operationalize a STEAM lending library for 2018-2019. In 2017-18, they launched the STEAM Leadership Council, cross-sector group of STEAM enthusiasts that meet monthly to collaborate, network, and learn about STEAM education. STEAM Saturdays also launched in March of 2018. It's a program designed to engage students in STEAM in an out-of-school environment. STEAM Saturdays have been selling out, and they plan to continue them in the 18-19 school year. The BCIU has an advocacy committee for education. They meet four times per year and collaborate on legislative policy in an effort to speak with a unified voice from the county. The members include a board member from each of the 13 districts, an alternate, the superintendent, and either the assistant superintendent, business administrator, or chief financial officer, along with the BCIU executive director, deputy executive director, chief financial officer, and director of strategic services and other invited staff. So that's something that they're just rolling out, that they're going to be contacting districts about. The Bucks County IU also shared a mini-report on their nursing services, which are also available to districts to meet the needs, the individual needs of students. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit is moving into Phase 3 of the comprehensive planning process and will be submitting the plan to PDE on November 30th. Nine characteristics have been strongly correlated to consistently high-performing intermediate units, and these characteristics have been taken into account in the process. The nine characteristics are a clear and shared focus, high standards and expectations, effective district leadership, high levels of collaboration and communication, curriculum and instruction, curriculum instruction and assessment aligned with standards, frequent monitoring of teaching and learning, focused professional development, supportive learning environment, and high levels of community and parent involvement. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit is also greatly expanding its early childhood services in Bucks County in an inclusive way. By combining pre-K counts, Head Start, and, I'm sorry, Head Start and early intervention services, the IU is able to meet student needs in a more inclusive way all across the county. One of their newer classrooms is over at Dibler, actually, and so they're expanding those services throughout our district as well. And then there were also many legislative updates, and I won't bore you with all of those, but I will forward all of those details to board members because I think that there's a lot of really helpful information in there. And the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 21st. Personnel, Mrs. Walters.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Solicitor Contract.
Motion by Mrs. Walters, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dolan. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, and the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 4th. Thank you.
Madam President. I had just expressed to the Board, I may have both myself and my partners, how grateful we are to have the opportunity to serve you. Many of the things that President Danis Clemmons said about us and our practice are incredibly nice, and we have a high bar to live up to. And I'm also very grateful to Ms. Furlong for taping this, because based on the interviews I did yesterday with both my wife and my teenage daughters, I'm not sure that they share the same value or same view of my excellence. So at least it's on tape, and I can prove it. But I, I do thank the Board for the opportunity to serve this community, and we will do our very best to live up to the things that you expect from us.
Okay, policy. Says, Ms. Kildare is not here, so I will just share that there was not a Policy Committee meeting since our last board meeting, and the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 4th. Upper Bucks County Technical School. Dr. Yarnell?
Thank you. July is the one month in which the UBCTS, JOC does not meet typically, and we have not met this year. Therefore, the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 16th, 2018. I would note, for those of you who missed, the new executive director has taken his seat at the vocational school. He is interviewing, or at least discussing, with all the members who sit on the JOC, their views on the school and its progress. And he was here tonight, which I think is a great tribute, especially since he happens to live in suburban Hazleton, so it's a drive for him to get home. So the next meeting is on the 16th of August.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. Technology, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Mrs. Vanis Clemmons. The Technology Committee has not met since the last board meeting. Our next meeting will be Monday, September 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Act 48, Mrs. Walters.
Act 48 has also not met. We will meet again on Thursday, November 8th.
Thank you. The Penridge Area Coordinating Committee. Mrs. Dolan, do you have anything to add?
They did not meet in the month of July, and our next meeting is scheduled to be on February 8th.
Okay, thank you. Old Business? Announcements. An executive session was held before tonight's school board meeting for the purpose of Personnel Matters. An additional executive session will follow tonight's meeting for the purpose of Personnel Matters. The next regular school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 20th. We are back to public, public comments. Any questions or comments from guests? Okay, thank you. Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Or adjourned, thank you.